I call to put a regular scheduled board supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, December 4th, 2018, and ask if everybody please join forward as we honor America's pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, thank you and good morning. First item on our agenda, as always, is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address topics on today's agenda or really any topic you'd like to address. Anybody wishing to do so, come right on up here. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, move on to consideration of a support letter for the ISU-led Arinett Wireless Proposal. We've got Hung Wee with us from ISU today to walk the board through exactly what this is and what you're asking us for.
Sure. Thank you.
I think you need to plug into the main computer that's there so that we can see your presentation.
Do you have USB?
Yes. Oh, USB.
You can use mine?
Sure.
No, you have the other one.
Yes.
I'm worried you can see that we're in temporary quarters when it comes to technology. The good news is by about the first week in Jan- or second week in January, we should be actually updated into the 2000s. Shelley, that projector's been here as long as you have.
For sure. And most of you were at home.
You still seem to be operational. Jack, you're not so much.
She started, she had to light the candle.
I couldn't help noticing when I pulled in that the back of your truck is all covered with dust. What happened?
You want to help me on it? Do I need to come to that meeting to ask for payment?
The beauty of living on a gravel road.
That's right. I just noticed that.
No, it is, it has a bucolic feel about it.
Sorry, it's my first time coming to a public meeting, so I was not, I was thinking it's a small meeting, but sorry, but.
Yeah, we're by new, like Eric said. It's installed two weeks from now. Sorry.
I think I didn't do a good job explaining to Hung Wee that he was coming to give a presentation to the full board meeting, and maybe he thought it was going to be a little more intimate.
Right.
So, we'll just work our way through it, Hung Wee.
So, it's coming up now. So, while the machines are getting ready, maybe I can just briefly explain the context about the project. And I think as we live in Iowa, we all know the importance of agriculture and rural education to us. But one obstacle to fully leveraging this potential is actually connectivity. So, the effort is basically looking at how can you add skill or leaving that for developing wireless technologies that could play the foundation for next generation agriculture and rural communities. So, that's the problem.
So, we're, in a nutshell, we're looking at ways to get wireless internet coverage out in areas that right now we don't have anything. And Hung Wee is leading an effort from Iowa State, and there's multiple other places that you're competing with to give these kind of grant dollars to be able to start to build kind of that next generation of wireless that would cover rural areas and smaller towns.
Yes, yes. So, the program itself is called a Platform for Advanced Wireless Research. It's jointly funded by the National Science Foundation and also 25 industry consortium members who's leading the wireless carriers and technology providers. So, it's a hundred million program that's going to invest in four projects. Two projects have already been funded last year in New York City and Salt Lake City. So, this year there will be two more projects that's going to be selected for funding. And as you can tell, the past projects was all in urban settings. And I think the program actually recognized the importance of agriculture and rural communities. So, they do at least want to see one platform, one project funded, that's going to address the agriculture and rural issues. From what I've heard so far, this may be the only project that's specifically targeting agriculture and rural regions.
Oh, that would be outstanding for number one.
So, in a way, it's really up to us to convince the sponsor that we can actually get this done well. And also, we cannot get this done just by having ISU working on it. So, we really need to work with the communities and school districts and so that's. So, I think the county has been very supportive for, so. But it looks like it's a key. Some way, it's just ever.
Well, and so let's just, kind of as we go, what you're asking us for today and what you and I have worked together to draft is a letter of support for this most recent proposal that you're suggesting you're hearing. We may be the only ag-related proposal going in this time. But it's a letter of support from the county just saying, yeah, we're supportive of this project. We think it would be good for Story County. We're willing to stand behind it and not committing any county resources, but committing some of our expertise if we were to get the project to work with the group on identifying locations that you may position the wireless things and the wireless transmitters and receivers, and just overall supporting the idea of us going after this grant. Is that what you and I have put together to present here?
And ideas to, I work with.
Well, I'm sorry, I forgot.
So, the ideas to work with the county and also about eight other school districts and up to 15 cities to have how can deploy the infrastructure so that it can be of maximum value to be brought up this company. So, I look at, you know, eight school districts that are engaged in Story County and rural county. So, I think the county office here is actually very nice population as far as providing connectivity to the surrounding regions and the location height of our city.
Correct.
But not looking for any cash contribution.
Questions for Hung Wee is it looks like we may not get our technology up. But question, so we're simply, I was hoping it was going to be a bigger presentation than this, and I think that's what Hung Wee intended, to kind of underscore everything. But really, what we're talking about today is simply, are we willing to have the county offer a letter of support as part of the grant application that needs this new member?
I remember from when the first letter came in and we voted on it. So, I appreciate, you know, that one was a little like, what are we? The information that was provided in our board packet, which is your, it looks like your presentation document, okay, your summary, and it was very good. A little over my head, it's still a lot of places, but very good. And I was able to follow it and understand what you were doing. So, my questions are really only about the draft of the support letter regarding expectations because it is worded a little vaguely, or it says we'll provide staff. It says this includes providing active representation. What is active?
So, yeah, thanks for asking that question. I think, you know, we are still at this stage of drafting the proposal. I think, to answer your question, essentially, we envision that this infrastructure will be part of the structure of the county and surrounding state and school districts and be able to access. I think in a way, it's kind of treating it as a shared infrastructure. So, there may be cases, let's say, you may need to actually access the rooftop. Probably we want to be in touch with someone in charge of that, even to make sure this is down. If I know what, so there's going to be, I think, some interaction between the project and the county.
So, you're looking for actual skilled people in their particular skill set, wherever that would be within our county, to help advise through that particular process?
Yeah.
So, the other, another thing that popped up for me, and this is from, I think, a practical competitive standpoint. It sounds wonderful. This is, it appears state-of-the-art, and we know how many of our ag producers, we know how many there are people actually, and Ames, other friends who don't get the internet, okay? So, but I'm concerned, one of my concerns is that we're pledging to be, end up putting county resources, not money, but, you know, taking staff devoted time. And we're putting it into something, and I didn't hear you say that there were, there was any interaction between our private internet providers. Is that part of where you see this may go as you develop?
So, in fact, we have actually various developed private providers.
Okay.
U.S. Senator and Wired Media Bank, U.S. Senator. They are actually major supporters of this effort. And essentially, it's going to be something that's going to contribute to the local economic development including those providers. This could be an expert for them to try out the next generation of technologies, right? Expert for driving technology evolution. We do see the potential work together in driving technology, not just development, but also deployment. That's where the private providers.
And that, I'm sure you know that we have several smaller private providers too.
Indeed. Indeed. We, I think, in Story County, there were two or three providers, actually, who came to our workshop, like in the 2009, and I think they understand how, where the synergy may be.
Wonderful. And then my final kind of comment more is that I almost felt like adding the words here as practical, to, you know, we will provide our facilities as practical. And I know that's assumed. I mean, obviously, you and your team have put a lot of work on it. But there will be situations where maybe you need something and we're not in a position to provide that.
Understood, understood. Yeah, this, I think you say it exactly right for us. This letter in no way gives carte blanche access to staff or to facilities or to infrastructure. But what it does say is that we're supportive of this concept, and we're going to try to be helpful going forward wherever we can. But like you say, we're practically, we're able to.
And the last one, I hesitate to, yes, until Marty weighs in because I know he's been talking to some people about that.
Sure. I mean, we're, this is an all-hands-on-deck conversation. I live in the unincorporated. He just made note of it on the desk on my truck. I am dealing with a 20th century technology for internet service. I welcome anybody. And I would point out just to lay your fears, or it's the 911 system, as we use it as our repeaters on the co-op elevator here, which is private, and up on Johnson Sales in Seering, which is private. So, the county has an expectation of the private sector. And so, to me, to sit there and have a conversation where if they like a sighting opportunity on this building, I think, I would encourage it. It has every good comfort about it. And I would tell you that we're already, we're in confederation in previous ways that this is not a problem.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for.
Right, but let's just be clear, Hung Wee, I'd ask you to address this. So, I don't think this should be viewed as a project that is going to take a life of his own, that survives as this entity in perpetuity. This is a test, a potential test case of how we would deploy this, with the ultimate goal being that it would get commercialized somewhere and be viable down the road. We would just kind of be that incubator that shows whether something like this is even possible over a five-year period if we get the grant.
Yes, that's a very good question for example.
I see this is an easy yes, but tell me what happens after we refer a vote to affirm to do this? What do you do with that?
So, we are working on, so we're at the second stage of competition now. And we're working on a proposal that's due by 5:00 p.m. next Tuesday, one from today. So, that's when we submit the proposal, and then we expect to hear back around January whether we're going to enter the space where that's going to be the folks who will come to the American City Schools to visit and check how things are up here. So, that's a site visit stage that's going to complete by April if we deliver to get into that stage. And then the final winners will be announced by fall next year.
So, this all, from this date going forward with a successful vote would take place in 2019? Is that what you just said?
The actual project?
Well, I'm just saying that on an approval basis, as you go through the gating, as you just described it, to get to the point where you have approval to move towards a build-out.
So, that's going to be early coming 19, but the final decision will be by April, 4, 2019.
Okay.
With anything, so let's say we made it all the way through the process. We could get kicked out of the process, and in fact, we found this the last time we went to the grant. We felt like we put forward a really good application, made it into the process, and then we were one of the, kind of the early ones that was culled out of it. If we make it all the way through, you're talking about everything ramping up and really starting in 2020 to start the project. But we would find out if we were awarded this sometime in the fall of 19.
Yeah, right. So, I just want to share that, as we've mentioned, it's a completely different process, right? I think it's not just equal competition between faculty members, but really various distribution sites. So, you know, this is something we all care for, and I think, and this is one of the reasons for us to try to pursue this. And hopefully, things will work out well, but if not, we'll continue therefore. And I just don't want to give any policy question that would make sense.
Here.
I don't see as a picky winner here. I think we're just looking for opportunity.
Other questions or comments, or I take a motion?
I would move consideration of the support letter for the ISU-led Arinett Wireless Proposal and as presented to us today.
I would second.
Move to the second further discussion. Hung Wee, thank you so much for coming over. Sorry that our technology. Chitty Olson Sanders Eye. Hung Wee, you want to take the letter with you, or you want me to send it to you?
Are you doing it? Well, if you have it, I can, then.
I'll send it to you. All right.
Excellent.
Very good. Next item on our agenda is the presentation of donations to YSS and DHS for the benefit of foster children in Story County. County Attorney Jessica Reynolds.
Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning. Well, good morning, board of supervisors.
Good morning.
Before I get started, I wanted to call a couple people up to sit with me at the microphone. The first is Elaine Cox, and she's a local foster parent here in Story County. And the second is Bambi Schrader, and she's a representative of Four Oaks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I don't want you.
My attorneys are so. Well, I'm here today to talk about one of our most vulnerable populations in Story County, and that's our foster children. In 2017, we had 65 foster kids that were Story County foster children. And each child has their own unique story. These are children that have suffered the most serious types of abuse. We're talking severe physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, due oftentimes to substance abuse issues and mental health issues of the parents. That sounds great. Thank you. And, you know, it's easy for us to talk about abuse and define abuse by saying sexual abuse, physical abuse, but when you actually start to think about what that means in terms of a child and what a child experiences when they go through those types of abuse, it's very upsetting. And we've got to help our kids and our communities that are going through these things heal. And one thing I've learned as a prosecutor to meet these types of cases is that when you meet a child who's been through that type of trauma, there's something different about them, and it's across the board. There is a lack of self-worth in them. There's a lack of trust in everyone that they meet and they experience. And it really makes sense when you start to really think about it because the person that is supposed to take care of them and that they're supposed to be able to rely on is someone who's abused them and treated them literally like garbage. And so, when DHS and all of our helpers and our society get involved, our new children from their home, one of the things that's upsetting and starts, and I think to a lot of us that do this work, is that kids are told to grab whatever possessions they have, if they have any, and put them in a garbage bag, and tote those belongings back and forth to their new homes. And I say homes because we know statistically that most children move and relocate to at least three foster homes during their time in the system, and sometimes a lot more. And so, there's a national movement that is recognizing how damaging it is, and that that small part of how we transition foster children between their homes is very, very important. Because when we send a child to foster care with a trash bag, it reiterates what they've learned from the abuse that they've experienced. You're trash, you're garbage, and you don't matter. And as citizens, that's wrong. And all of us just know, I mean, you hear that, we know that that's wrong. And so, it's our job, since we know that there's something wrong, to intervene and make it right. And I'd like to play just a quick, two-minute video clip about one of the national movements that's up in this area. You have to listen really closely.
My name is Danny Mendoza, and four years ago, I found out that my cousin was living in a car. He was nine years old. I tried to volunteer at a local group home for kids in his situation, but they said I was too young. Then I learned that there are almost half a million foster kids living in this country. And every day, 1,600 of them enter the system with whatever they can fit and two garbage bags. No families, no friends, no support, just two trash bags. Instead of being powerless, I decided to start Together We Rise. Now, young people like me have a voice.
Have a voice.
Have a voice.
Have a voice.
Have a voice and can do something. No child should have to move their belongings from home to home in a trash bag. So, we started a program called Sweet Cases. Sweet Cases allows us to provide duffel bags, pillow pets, and toys for kids entering the system.
So, when they move, they have their own bag for their stuff?
Not just a garbage bag.
This month alone, we will provide 1,600 sweet cases.
We've come so far, but the road ahead is long. And we need your help. Let the world know.
Let the world know.
Let the world know.
We are kids. We are kids.
We are kids.
We are not trash.
We are not trash.
We are not trash.
Please check out TogetherWeRise.org and learn more about how you can get involved with the Sweet Cases Program.
So, now that we have an idea of the issue, let's get to the solution. And my office is so excited to have Team with Team Story to have solicited donations to help our local foster children. And our whole point of doing this is to let our foster kids know in Story County, they're cared about, they're valued, and they aren't garbage. And we started hoping to fill 20-ish bags total overall. And the community outpouring of support has been overwhelming. And one of the coolest parts of it has been the way that youth in our community have contributed. And it kind of reminds me of the video, but you see a youth all around the nation banding together to help other kids. And in our community, we had that. We've got some of our students who spearheaded the project in the Bay Lake Cubs Club here. And they're here today with their teacher, Jessie McGaffman. We're really glad to have them through the day. And what we ended up getting out of this donation drive is we received 20 duffel bags that were donated from the Cambridge United Methodist Church. And we filled each bag with the very generous donations that we've received and been able to organize them by age so that as soon as a child in Story County is removed, we're going to be able to assess their abuse, their likes and dislikes, or gender, and provide them with a duffel bag of their own that's filled with personalized items. And so, that was our goal, was that we would get those 20 bags and we would fill them. But as you can see from the photo, we had, that is our inventory in the county attorney's office. And we received way more than can fill 20 bags. We also received $320 in cash to purchase additional bags. And we, and it continues, we said that there was a December 1st cut-off date for the donations, but I just got invited on Facebook to a Christmas party in Huxley, and someone had posted the flyer, and they're going to be receiving donations at their Christmas party for this and continuing to donate. So, we see this continuing, and that wasn't something that I expected. It was a really nice, nice part of the situation. And I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank Cassandra Ames from my office and Julie Erickson from my office, the 4-H Clover Kids, who brought a huge amount of items to our office. The Nevada Cubs Club, they did, they collected by far the most items of anyone that donated to our program. Cambridge United Methodist, who supplied all of the duffel bags that you see here today. And I just want everyone to know that it's really uplifting, and it's going to mean a lot to these kids. It will change their life. It will let them know that in their darkest days, there's hope and that they're fully supported in our community. So, I thank you so much. Now, I'm going to turn over to Claudia.
I don't know why I stand up when I present. So, my name is Bambi Schrader, and I actually work for youth, as I'll show through services and aims. But we are a partner agency with Four Oaks, so, and our contract is currently under Four Oaks, so have to kind of wear two hats. I just want to say thank you on behalf of YSS and Four Oaks. It never, I've worked for YSS for 29 years, 23 of that's been in the foster care program. And it never fails to astound me of the generosity of communities, of groups, Story County Attorney's Office, the Nevada Cubs, you know, all the other 4-H clubs and stuff that help. Many families or people feel that they cannot be fostering adoptive parents, which I would challenge you on that, because I was a foster adoptive parent for 12 years, and we adopted our daughter through the foster care system. So, I will challenge you on that. If you don't think you can, come and talk to me because I can probably change your mind. That's what I do for a living. So, but it never fails to astound me of the generosity of the communities and the giving to the children in your communities, because these are the kids from your communities. And our goal is always to keep a child from Nevada in Nevada, or from Story City in the Story City. So, we need more foster homes. I sent some information to Marla this morning. We sent 500,000 or half a million in the foster care systems nationwide. We have 4,000 children in the foster care system in Iowa. 4,000. We only have less than 2,000 foster groups. So, we need more foster homes because we are putting more kids in one foster home that should be there, where they're sitting in shelters much longer, or they're, again, as we mentioned, they're bony. They're going from home to home to home because we only can put them in a home for a while, and then we have to lose them. So, please get that message out when we're in need. And with that, I need you to move it in late to talk about how far these bags are.
Brought a visual aid, even though there was one there. My husband and I have been doing foster care for 25 or more years. We've had between 50 and 60 children in our homes. And it breaks my heart when they come into my home with a bag like this. Sometimes I wash the things. Sometimes I wash the things in there, sometimes I don't, because one little boy that I had from this county, he had a shirt that was too small for him, it had holes in it, but it smelled like his mother, and so I didn't wash it. Anyway, these kids who have a duffel bag of their own gives them some dignity. They're taken out of their homes, sometimes forcefully, but because they need to be. And here they are given a garbage bag by these wonderful police officers who just want to get them safe, but it's really an indignity. So, the kids that come to my home, actually, once I, I worked in a frontline clinic, I'm now retired, I'm a pediatric nurse, and once I ask on our system, "Please, would you give me some bags for foster kids?", and I got a whole bunch of bags, but unfortunately, one of the well-meaning doctors gave me a bag perhaps that she went to a conference for, and it was either for Metamucil, if you're constantly, or Viagra, which you're not. And I don't know any kid who wants to go to school with a Metamucil bag or whatever. So, to have these generic bags that look like everybody else is wonderful. Vammy and I also teach TIPS MAP, which is Trauma Informed Care, and one of the things Jessica mentioned is that these kids are traumatized, and often, we don't know what the trauma has been, but when kids are in a survival mode, when they have, they don't, their clothes aren't clean, they don't have lunch at school because their parents don't send money, and they don't fill out the forms for free and produced, or whatever, these kids, their development stops because they're in survival. Where am I going to eat? What am I going to wear? I wore these pants all week, and they're dirty because I spilled something on them from lab, and no washing machine, or if they do have a washing machine, it doesn't work, or they don't have laundry soap. And so, these kids are in survival, and so, they are really lacking in some of the areas of development. This is one wonderful thing to release or reduce the stigma of, "I'm a foster kid", and I'll bet you guys who did this, kudos to you and your teacher. I'll probably cry. You probably know foster kids. You probably know them, and you know how hard it is to be in foster care with somebody you don't know. Maybe you do know them, maybe it's a relative. Sorry. But you know these kids, and you know how hard it is. So, when the kids come to my house, I tell them, "Tell everybody that you're living with your aunt, or you're living with your grandma, because I am filling that position." So, then the kids say, "How come you're here?" "Oh, I'm living with my aunt." And then usually, the question is stopped, instead of, "I'm a foster kid, my parents are messed up, messed up, and I'm living here because I can't live at home." So, thank you very much. Thank you guys for doing this, it's wonderful.
And that concludes our presentation of Foster Kids. Thank you so much for being here, and I'll let the board make a comment if you wish, and then I'm just going for a photo.
Absolutely. So, I'll start by just saying, awesome. It's overwhelming. And Jessica, you continue to demonstrate through your leadership in the county attorney's office, your commitment to making things better in Story County. And so, thank you to you and your staff, and all of Team Story, but most of all, thank you to you guys, the Nevada Cubs, and everybody who participated in this. We all have a responsibility to try to make our world just a little better, and you guys absolutely are doing that. Well, thank you very much. I'll turn it to the other board members for comments, and then we'll take a picture.
Traditions start, always have a start point, and I would like to think maybe this is, Jessica, what you do with your office, and in fact, you saw without trying, other than it was an internal conversation with some outreach, how well it turned out. And I think that you have the motivation, your office and staff, that people have the motivation. I'm proud to be from Nevada that has kids, that have the motivation. So, before I join the lane of crime, let's talk to you.
Problem to everybody involved, and I hope, I hope it grows every year. I hope, Jessica, you have to bring up six of the attorneys to haul everything in.
Me too. I hope that too.
Just call me head of times over in my truck, it's near my Prius, okay? All right.
What a nice problem to have. Okay, Jessica, anything else, or take a picture?
Nope.
Who's coming up here for the picture?
I want the Nevada kids, but Jesse, you guys.
Good, let's go, good. You guys are right in front and center.
Team Story.
How about right in your part? Who would like it to be this?
I feel the way they're moving out to their house. She might get banned here, won't she there?
Sure.
We could also go right to the front.
Call me.
That's a good one.
How about you guys?
Can you see the girls in the front?
We see.
Yes, I can. Everybody here? Good?
Yes, I do, Marty.
Marty knows the cameras I have now.
Okay. One more second. Gotcha.
One more for me, and then we'll move. All right, thank you, everyone. You guys have a good rest of the day at school. All right, next item on our agenda is presentation on the proposed improvements to Story Wind One Wind Energy Conversion System. And do we have Jeff?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have Jeff with us today, and Kimberly.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you guys so much for joining us. So, we've been hearing that there were upgrades going on on some of these, some of these systems, making preparations with some of the roads to get it.
You both have one.
The square thing in front of you. And so, we were curious exactly what's going on. We understand that the technology has really advanced over the last ten years or so.
Yes, sir.
And just would like the information of what exactly is happening, and what kind of impact that has.
Absolutely. Let me start off by thanking the county today for everybody that has to come in and provide this opportunity to answer questions, and really give an oversight of some proposed maintenance. My name is Jeff Price, I'm the project developer here in Iowa, joined today by Kimberly Dickie, who heads up our permitting and community development. Together, we are pretty much the face of the project moving forward. We do have our internal land agents on the ground that actually meet with the landowners on a day-to-day basis. The board at county level, Kimberly and I are the faces. So, anytime, we always provide our contact information, please feel free to reach out with questions. We have been working with the planning and development department to make sure that really everything's provided before the time comes to amend our conditional use permit that was approved some time ago. But the purpose of today is to really talk about some proposed maintenance that we're looking at, looking forward to doing. We put together a little PowerPoint presentation here, and if I can, I'd like to just run through it quickly, and please feel free to stop us at any time. Best question to me to raise. Our three main values that are instilled in us at Exterra, and you may have heard these before, is we're committed to excellence, we do the right thing, we treat people with respect. Those are instilled in us, you know, from day one, to make sure that we're doing the right thing, we are treating people with respect, and that even our individual landowners can feel those values, that our individual land agents can really attest to those. We are American-owned and operated. We do have investments in thirty-two states and four provinces in Canada. We are the world's number-one operator of wind and solar. Twenty eighteen, that was true for twenty seventeen as well. We put more megawatts in the grid than wind and solar anywhere else. Our current project timeline is we are more or less conducting our engineering oversight. What we're proposing is switching from a GE 1.5-megawatt tower to just a newer version, pretty much the same motor. It is rated at a 1.62-megawatt machine, however, it's still a 1.5-megawatt machine, it's just some internal software that allows it to operate to the 1.62, all engineering jargon, but for the most part, it is the same output of the machine. The hub height, which is where the NACEL sits and the generator and all that, remain the same at eighty meters, just to check that, at eighty meters. The current blade rotor diameter is at seventy-one meters for our current Story One site. What we're proposing is a little bit of a longer blade by twenty meters to ninety-one meters. Overall, that increases the overall tip height of the turbine at its tallest point from three hundred and eighty feet approximately to four hundred and ten feet, if you ever take, so it's about a thirty-foot delta in there. And really, that's just for the increased efficiency of the blades that we've learned over the past ten years. It allows the power curves to be a little steeper, where these machines can be more efficient at lower speeds. Really, it's just, like we said, you know, the technology's come a long way in the past ten years, and it's, this is where we're seeing the industry head. We talked a little bit about our engineering, that's kind of what we're in the process of undertaking, making sure that all the foundations and that the towers are in good suitable health to support this plant maintenance. Moving forward, in April of 2019, we will have a landowner dinner, invite all our assigned landowners out, and have our entire construction team in place as well, so that all questions can be answered about day-to-day operations during the maintenance phase and future O&amp;N operations as the site continues to operate. We're looking at submitting our permit to the county in April of 2019. With mobilization dates still yet to be determined, we're shooting for definitely after the fall of April, and making sure that the fields are in good working condition, we don't want to come out and make a mess of everything. So, we'll have that date locked down prior to submitting our application. The reason for the pausing and not coming in for the applications now is we don't like to get there too early, you know, we don't want to come in and propose some work a year from now. We'd like it to kind of be fresh and have everybody understanding what's going on, and really have our timelines locked down. So, we're shooting for April to have all that in, and then mobilization probably four to five months after, to give enough time for all the questions to be answered. And really, we have a lot to do once we submit that application. We need to meet with your roads and engineering departments to make sure we get a road use agreement in place, to understand the haul route we intend to use, and if you have the printed-out version that we provided, it has a picture of a site plan on there, and it actually depicts the haul route that we're proposing to use. Once that haul route is kind of solidified and locked in, we will drive that route with your county on road use folks. Using HD video, we identify the road conditions as-is, we come out, make sure we identify any culverts or anything like that that need to be extended, replaced, to be able to handle the trucks that'll come over them, and make sure that there's a clear agreement in place to say who will do the work and when the work will be done to restore the roads to as better, as good or better condition once the maintenance is completed. We also post a bond during that time, so that if the county needs to draw on it for up to a year, let's say, you know, a culvert gets cracked, for example, and we don't identify it for six months after the fact, if it's getting a little wet down there, or it's a low area, like we said, it's not identified for six months, there's still a bond in place that the county can draw on to make sure. So, once the road use agreement is determined, we do a pre-road inventory, and then ourselves, with third-party engineer and your county engineer, will determine an adequate dollar figure that would be put in place. So, all three parties have a say, it's not just a blanket.
It's an arrived at dollar value.
Absolutely. So, that kind of sums up our timeline. We do, like we said, have a lot to do prior to that application going in place, and obviously moving forward with the mobilization date. This is our overall site plan, it can be a little difficult to see here. The street roads are identified, as well as proposed haul route. This would be the same haul route we used when the site was originally constructed, so landowners should be very familiar with the turning radiuses that were used, temporary improvements that were put in. What's important to remember with this maintenance phase is it's only generator and blade replacement, so there will be no boring of new collection underground, no cement trucks coming through, no steel trucks coming through. This is just about four trucks for the blades and NACEL to come on site, the crane will come right in, de-stack the components of tower, load them on a truck, they go off, and the new components fly. They get moved very quickly. This Hundred megawatts, excuse me, this Hundred Tower site, we're projecting about ten to fifteen weeks of construction. So, it'll go pretty quick. And that's, you know, for a lot of reasons, mostly just to not beat everybody's hair for so long, and we can go pretty quick and get out of the deal. And we can provide detailed updates of this at a much higher resolution in our keys as the time comes to really show how they detail. One thing that is on there as well is a proposed lay-down yard next to our operations and maintenance facility. That'll just be a place for parking of local vehicles when the crews come on site, and construction trailers, office manager, things of that sort. We're going to try and use the O&amp;N building as much as possible, using our existing facility, and then the lay-down yard will be used for storage of nuts and bolts, things like that. It'll be, it'll be different than when the project was originally constructed, as in, we won't be storing like copper wire and things like that, won't need to be housed As the farm continues to operate, you know, we can, we can say that our landowner payments will remain to be in place. This will keep the site operating for another fifteen to twenty years post-maintenance period, remains compatible with ranching and farming. As we said, road improvements will be conducted, and it's still clean, homegrown, affordable energy. To date, in Iowa, we've contributed annually about eleven point four million in property taxes goes out between our operating assets across the state. We'll continue to employ our O&amp;N and maintenance folks that work at our operations facility. During the construction period, we will see about a hundred construction folks come to the site, that'll be increased local businesses, staying in hotels, eating restaurants, shopping at the food mart. Wind energy remains to be efficient, reliable, and safe, and helping America become energy independent. We have a few pictures here just of the mobilization. This is a picture of the lay-down yard, as I said, the one in the bottom right will not have, we won't need the copper to be stored there like it is and shown as this, but just kind of showing how we, in the left picture, how we'll scrape off the top soil, make sure that's placed off to the side for reclamation when the site's restored. Moving forward, we will bring in our large direction crane will come in to fly the main NACEL and rotors, just a quick picture of that being assembled and there on site. This is the NACEL being flown up to the top of the tower. So, the same big crane again, and you can see the rotors assembled on the ground, this is very similar to when the site was originally constructed, just kind of in reverse, and then put back in place again. And here we have a picture of the rotor and hub assembly being flown against the NACEL. Restoration will be very quick as well, we don't anticipate being on each individual turbine site longer than a few days. And like we said, as these get moving forward, if landowners are, if we need to damage any crops or anything like that using the construction area, all farmers will be reimbursed for crop damage that's used. The agreements that the landowners have in place as well will remain unchanged, those agreements were something we agreed to years ago, and we don't intend to change that. That's for really two reasons, it keeps the payments coming into the landowner, and it allows us to keep, keep the site operating for the next fifteen, twenty years. That's really all I have as far as the presentation goes. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
As you go through a technology refresh, is there any discussions in regards to, as you see other wind tower farms grow? Are you thinking anywhere to grow this one? In a sense, you would be in more terms still?
Not at this time. Story One is an operating asset, the Hundred megawatts, and we have a customer for, the customer remains in place and is signed on to do an additional fifteen to twenty years. So, at this time, we don't anticipate any further development with Story One project. Thank you.
Related to that question, is Iowa at capacity pretty much for wind energy because of the infrastructure? I've heard various.
Yes, so, no ma'am. Really, there's three main things that you need for, to build infrastructure, host a wind farm. You need the wind resource, which Iowa has plenty of, as we all know. You need... You need the land, and we have an abundance of landowners that are willing to participate in these wind projects. But the third thing is the tough one to come by, and that's the customer. You need somebody to purchase the electricity. Now, we do deal a lot with aligned energy, SOCO. We do a lot with co-ops and municipality, but really finding the customer is the downside there. One thing at Nixter that we do is we will not propose development to a county unless that customer is there. That's just how we like to do things. We only like to put forward projects that are going to get built. So at this time, there is still very much opportunity in Iowa for more energy. I think as time goes on, you know, wind is only going to become more and more prominent, especially matching it with solar and battery. Really phasing all three into one will be, probably the future, I think, in about 10 to 15 years. So by no means is Iowa at capacity nor Story County.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to just restate what I heard to make sure that what I'm hearing is what you were actually intending. So I hear you expect this to actually ramp up and start occurring sometime late in the spring.
Of 2019, yes sir.
Of 19. That 10 to 15 weeks of actual construction time, once you get going, that you're going to work with our county engineer and our secondary roads to lay out routes, look at road conditions, make sure everything's appropriate there, that there's a bond in place if there's any damages that occur from that. The rationale for you guys doing this, as I heard it was reduce maintenance on aging systems, increase lifespan now that you know you have a long-term customer. I heard increased efficiency. So what I heard when you were talking about new components inside and the new blades is be able to generate more energy at lower wind speed?
That's correct.
Okay. So increased efficiency and just making sure that this, I think, as we originally conceived this, has it been 10 or 12 years ago, we were looking at a 20 to 25-year lifespan. Now we're looking more like a 40-plus year lifespan.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I heard all that.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. More other questions? I so appreciate that you guys would come and share this with us.
Absolutely. If I can add, you know, this will be hopefully the first of many updates that we provide. Moving forward, you know, we'll be doing more frequent meetings with your planning and development department, especially with your roads group as well, making sure that points of contact are identified as these dates do start to approach. But as always, we provide our contact information. Please let us know if you have any questions, anything like that, and we'd be happy to come back in.
Super. And maybe we'll do that. I'm going to look to Jerry and Emily in the back room. Do we ask the questions we need to ask? Did we get the information we needed to get here today, just in this public forum?
I think you did. This will be a brand-new conditional use permit submitted, so they'll submit the application and materials, they'll get it all into all the departments in the county.
Yeah. So Jerry's saying that there's lots in the process that we've got to do. This just gives us the information to get the process started. Good. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You're welcome.
Next item is consideration of minutes from both the 20th and the 27th.
Move as presented.
Sorry.
Motion to second, Olson.
Aye.
Giddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions as listed.
As listed.
Evan.
Giddy. Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda board.
Move as presented.
Olson.
Aye.
Giddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. No public hearing. On this board, I am going to ask that on additional items, we deal with number three first, simply because we've got some time constraints with the people who are standing on Herta. Any objection to moving that around at this point?
None.
Okay. So we'll go to item number three on additional items first, and this is discussion consideration of Story County as the applicant for the CDBG Career Links Employment Transportation Grant. We've got Brooke and Brenda with us today. Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I think I'm going to maybe move a little bit my things around too. Brenda has to.
I have the time. It's a straight.
Come on, Brenda.
So just, I guess, to start this a little bit, there were three main things that I wanted, or that Herta wanted to talk with the county about today. So I'm going to move the bus replacements to the end for Brenda. And first, I want to start by thanking Supervisor Olson for engaging Herta with economic development and working on this project. And of course, Brenda and all the work that she's done with local employers and of course attending today and then does children for all the help and support that she always gets from. So Brenda, can please talk a little bit about the needs in the background of why we came here.
So, good morning. Again, my apologies that I just allowed to, it's great, we can celebrate all the wonderful things in Story County. It's not a surprise to anyone in the room how tight our labor market is. If you weren't aware, actually, the manufacturing rate dropped to 1.1%. So I do believe that is probably the lowest.
It is.
In Story County. And so we are working very hard on a number of fronts to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support all the different, the attraction of workforce into the county beyond a broader scale nationally, taking a look at the folks that are here, figuring out ways of what they need to be able to get into the workforce, what 40 hours will need, and of course, looking at the areas surrounding the county that may have an untapped workforce that we should be looking to actually bring to the county. And so one of those areas is Marshall County. It's traditionally a great deal higher on the unemployment than we have. They've obviously had some other tragedies that have continued to add to kind of maybe a little higher unemployment rate than we see in other places. And what I would tell you though is that Marshall County has really been great partners and they want their folks to work. And so, but they've got other things going on, obviously, to some priorities. But we have a lot of growth projected here on the east side of the county and even in the industries along I-35, where I feel like the workforce that may be in Marshall County, it makes some sense to try to get them from Marshall County over to our opportunities in Story County, really as a way to help out our businesses that want to continue to grow and expand here, but need to be expanded more than they're looking to have sat. So I'm really here, I think, to provide, from our perspective, what we're hearing from our business and industry, where we know we're headed specifically with Burke and the number of folks that are going to need to support doubling their facility here in the next 18 months to two years. I really feel like Marshall County is an opportunity for them. I have been with them in Marshall County and know that those are jobs that are highly sought after in Marshall County. The reputation of the company is strong. We continue to work with Iowa Works over at Marshall Town on how we can present Story County opportunities to that group. They were actually very energized, the Iowa Works staff, to hear that we were working maybe on a transportation solution that may allow their folks to more easily get over. So with that, I sure welcome any questions you have. Again, I'm here to kind of validate that we are hearing this is a need and I would also say I, we were involved in a conversation, a number of us were last week. We know we have to have, we've got to continue to have a transportation discussion within the boundaries of Story County as well. So I don't want to not throw that out there that says we need to be also thinking about where we're missing some things within our boundaries moving people. And this is really just one piece that there's an opportunity for somebody and it makes some sense to pursue that if that works in your minds.
So earlier, I would say closer to the summer, Supervisor Olson had engaged Herta to have a conversation with Brenda, kind of facilitated that relationship to address some of the employment-related concerns for transportation. And that is part of, in Herta's strategic plan, one of the things that we're working on is focusing on employment transportation and having an initiative with that, so it was all very timely. I think we've got a couple of solutions, and again, this is just helping with the Nevada employment to start with. That was kind of the jumping off point. And then we are going to continue the conversation for additional areas in Story County as well. So I guess that caveat to start us off here. So we did focus first on the second shift, and that was due to employer feedback needing to get employees for second shift more of a priority than first shift. And it sounds like after meeting with the city administrator of Nevada, that the third shift, they're not sure if that will end up being eliminated or not. So second shift really seemed like the priority for us. And looking at having our staffing and the cost of the project, we also worked with CERCA, the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Committee Alliance, because I don't know that everybody in the room knows what that means, along this process as well. So we did find that there's a community development block grant. However, those can only be awarded to cities or county governments. So even though Herta is a governmental body, we can't directly apply for that funding. That's when I enlisted the help of our liaison deb children to help us kind of walk through this research process. We did also connect with Region Six, which is the council of governments next door in Marshall Town, or Marshall County. And they had a similar previous request to take folks from Marshall Town to the Tama area. And they said that that was denied because the perception of drawing workforce away from local businesses. So they did not have very good feelings that this would be something approved by Marshall County or by Marshall Town themselves. In addition, you know, the tornadoes, they're still recovering and they didn't have a lot going on in that community right now. So we did, again, talk with Administrator Marcus, who expressed support. However, the city of Nevada can't apply because they can't have the match, they don't have the local match for this grant opportunity. So the maximum award is $150,000 and it has a maximum of a 24-month period of grant funding. It will only fund operational expenses, so no capital, so we're not asking to buy any bus for this project. It's a 50/50 match, so 50% of the funds would be the grant funding and 50% would have to be the local match. We do anticipate the annual operating expenses to be $187,000. I did list here in the bullet points of an estimated Fairbox revenue of $13,000. That's an annual amount. So then half of the remaining balance would be the $87,000.
And tell me where the Fairbox revenues come from.
That's coming from the employees who are riding the bus to and from work. So this would be, I guess I should take a step back and explain, this would be establishing a bus that would simply pick up in Marshall Town off of Highway 30, come 30 West, and then stop at the major employers in Nevada.
These are also stops, right? We looked at Colo, correct? A stop that would be, could be pick up in Colo, correct?
We could look at that. I didn't actually factor that in on the timeframes, but if we have enough time, we can still be flexible.
And is it our expectation that the employers then are utilizing this system for workforce or land? Do you see it in game? Or is that not part of our expectation?
That is a great question. I since, I just was saying the other day, it was like an avalanche of contacts. So first, we met with Brenda, and after that, I started getting tons of phone calls, all related but unrelated, so they didn't know everyone was contacting me at the same time. Manpower had contacted whoever they contract with here in Nevada. I mean, there was five employers, of which four of them said they are not interested in helping with the cost. One of them was priority envelope and they said they would be interested in helping with the cost because they are struggling so significantly to get employers to work. I've heard from the city that that may have changed for Burke as well. So we can do some additional outreach.
If I can jump in here on this, my request to Herta was tell us the cost, because that's never been established and everybody, and also as the discussion was occurring at the initial stages was it felt that the Marshall Town to the east, east part of the county and the east side was good because it was a pretty straightforward request from, anticipation from a lot of people. And so this also hopefully will serve as some kind of base about where costs are figured and whatever. But it was always my expectation that the employers have skin in the game. And when I saw the numbers, it was really my expectation there, because I think there are some issues involved, which we would talk about. But I just want to make that clear that the complication is who can apply and who can't. I mean, it's limited and who can ask for the money. So I do have a recommendation that's somewhere in between all of this about the process next going forward is now that we know the numbers. I know Deb Walson, who is the regional director for Manpower, she is saying, she's waiting to see the numbers so she can go back to her employers. It's one thing to ask employers upfront, are you willing to pay, when they have no idea what they're committing to and how much, as opposed to possibly Brenda and I are going back to these employers and saying, are you really? Are you ready? We did all the work for you. We put it together. Now, are you going to come up? Understand that this is what the cost is and you have got to be the major participants. The other factor here that was so important, I feel, is this grant, as you know, it's $150,000 max, whether it goes one year or two years. The employers have to be, understand that not only is there the first-year match, but then they're going to have to pick up the other part of that match. Or, you know, so this is laying it on the line to then go back to the employers from my perspective. And I really thank everybody, there was a lot of work that went in just to get this one possible solution for one shift or, you know, one time period, but it is running seven days a week, which may be attractive to some employers also.
With a focus on second shift. With a focus on second shift. So just for, you know, to make sure everybody's also understands the caveats to the grant, 51% or more of the individuals who benefit would have to be low to moderate income individuals. And so what we would do is if the county's going to apply for this, would be create a contractor, an MOU for this grant, and then Herta would have a survey intake kind of process with anyone who's going to ride. And that was something that was discussed with the grant manager when Deb and I reached out.
What is, what is low to moderate income? Give me the salary range that we're talking about there, because I hear that and I think, okay, so if they're coming to Burke in one of these new jobs, we know that those are going to pay somewhere in the neighborhood of $17 an hour, and does that still qualify? Is low to moderate or by virtue of having the job, are they knocking themselves out of being able to use it?
So I think one of the, one of the things, again, there's a lot of programs that are out there, the Black Grant becomes the Department of Economic Child, and this is not an uncommon request. Oftentimes, remember, you're considering the size of the household. There's a number, a number of things that come into effect if they're a new, a new person, that might be part of the process when you think and qualify them as they're accepting this employment to move backwards on the government. There's a lot of things. It's not unusual, and I'm always amazed that, that it does always seem to work out because you are catching people before they more or less enhance employment. So it's no guarantees, but certainly something that should be considered. We just have a lot of pieces that are trying to come together right now to try to move this to the next level. And again, I would say that this is something, and the match discussion has not occurred with our employers, because again, like Laura said, you can't have a discussion when you don't even know really truly. But without you, we don't have an application, so it's got a lot of moving parts.
Lot of moving parts.
And Deb just brought over a document that she pulled up at the IAF website that shows for Marshall County that the income, household income range would be between, based on how many people you have at home, between $38,000 and 71,650.
So did I hear, you know, I think I've got, I'm going to pick at this one. There is a gating process on ridership for on an income basis? Is that what you're suggesting?
They would not decline anybody, but there's going to have to be some process in place where income is collected.
Yeah, there would have to be some type of survey where we just ask them over the phone so that they would ensure that we kept at about 51 or more percent so that we are making sure we're meeting the requirements of the grant itself.
But everybody can write by.
Okay. So is there any financial commitment or ask of the riders?
Yes, so that was the $13,000 in estimated Fairbox revenues. Now, I will say that after this was submitted for the county's packet, Miss Olson did have a conversation and we talked about maybe needing to look at increasing that. So this $13,000, we came upon that number by anticipating charging $5 per person per day. So we may look at if we need to, especially after doing So we may look at if we need to, especially after doing some more outreach with employers, we need to increase that to, let's say, $10 a day to help kind of offset some of those bottom line dollars.
And my point was, is it only costs $4 per day for an in-county resident? Or it does cost $4 for an in-county resident to get from Nevada to Ames to back. So this is a much longer trip and these are out-of-county residents for a workforce application. And so I felt something more like $350 or $4, because I was told it was more $0.50, okay? All right, so that it be that $8 to $10 range. It's, that works for the worker at $50 a week. And it's my understanding, Brenda, that the average wages of the type of manufacturing employee that would likely to ride this particular ride situation is that they're picking up at least $2 to $3 per hour by coming over to work at one of our manufacturers in Ames. So while they're paying $50 for transportation a week, they're picking up 40, they're picking up $120 a week in their paycheck.
So I don't think it's a reasonable expectation that there'd be, if we're looking for employers, what's going to be the game, the ridership business? So just back in napkin math tells me, so you said $13,000 and $5 per, per day. So you're expecting 25, 2600 rides a year, is what you're budgeting? And so you run that out in a number of workdays and you're talking about, what, 10 to 12 rides a day?
I think, I think I base this on 16. I wanted to go lower so that if the county was the one that decided to provide the local match, I'd rather base our numbers lower and find out if it was higher and not have as much that the county had actually provided for a local match. Another question that Ms. Wilson posed was how many buses are going to go at a time to meet the need for a second shift? And so, we planned at the beginning to start with one and then be able to expand it to two. So we're making sure we're getting as many folks as possible. And I do think if this is the direction that the supervisor, that the county goes, we need to make sure we're flexible enough in how we ride the grid that we can adapt the service to what we need. So we need to be providing more vehicles or additional times that we're flexible on how we do that.
In each time period, as I understood it, Brooke, from both getting people over to the county and getting people back, there's, the time period is for more than one round trip, correct? Possibly?
Well, since we're trying to meet the second shift, most of them are going to like, like we had some that started at the 2, and 2:30, and 3. So we're going to try to, to get them there where some people are getting to work a little early so we're not making as many trips, therefore we're more efficient. We can reduce those operating expenses.
It is incredibly expensive. I mean, per, per person to get over. Once again, the discussions have been going for, floating around. I would like to remind you that twice in, I believe, the last 10 years, PRRIDE has undertaken a survey or study that to take a look at what it would cost to move between basically Ames and get people down the metro area and back. That came with a $4 million startup cost and $2 million a year for operations, okay? So, so part of this is the realistic look at, can we even come and play at the table? And what would that look like? Because then, this is the particular grant available, that's available from the DOT. And this is the high cost to meet employer needs, which, which is going to happen. We know we might end up in, within the next 18 months, 700 more new jobs, right? So there's...
But we should be that lucky.
We should be that lucky, okay? So there's another, there are other options out there for more public transportation. Shared, or, you know, last week it was discussed, several groups discussed vouchers from, basically gas vouchers, all things, right? But what has been presented here is the realistic look and what would have to happen for employers to recruit the type of workforce that would come. We focused on Marshall Town because of availability, okay? But we're talking, who's going to ride a bus? Families only got one car, limited assets to begin with. People with unreliable transportation. People who have no transportation legally, at least because they've lost their driver's license. And these were all groups that were discussed, excuse me, as potential employment outreach at the workforce discussion last week. So in no way are, I think are any of us sitting here saying, this is the solution. But we've gotten to the point where this is if you, if people want to go down that path. And then it's employers, pretty much, you know, and I, I, we've got our own transportation issues to deal with, with rising costs of our service population inside of the county, right? This, this is it, okay? So it's, it's where do we, what do we do next?
Yeah, and I think, I think you hit it dead on the head. So let me tell you some of the, again, back of, back of napkin math that I'm doing here. So $140, $174,000 program, talking about getting half of the grant, but let's just deal with $174. Brooke, I'm going to use 17.4 riders a day, simply because that makes the math work with $174,000. You're talking about $10,000 basically per job that we're supporting for the transportation data, right? In essence, you're transporting them 20 miles, a little more than 20 miles, but in essence, 20 miles from Marshall Town to Nevada. So in a 20 mile per gallon car, that's one gallon of gas, driving, driving themselves, not counting wear and tear or anything else. So that's about $1,300 a year just in gas back and forth. And we're talking about spending $10,000 to do it. That's just, that's a hard, that's a hard one for me to get to, especially, it's different in my mind if the employers are, are fully on board and they see the value in this and they want to participate and they need some public assistance in order to make, especially starting out, to make it viable. But what I heard is five out of six, and we think maybe that'll go down, but right now, five out of six have kind of said, no, I'm not interested. So those are the, those are the ones I'm, I'm wrestling with. The other one that I'm wrestling with, and I'm looking at Lisa Mark when I say this, is the cost to the, the hidden cost to the county to administer a grant like this. Traditionally, Lisa, it's about 7%. It's about 7% of the total grant award that we try to build into something like that. We have a special deal with Boost right now where we charge them 3%, I think. But in essence, we're, we're spending county dollars on something like that. But that's not reflected anywhere. That, that additional 7% would be an additional cost, indirect cost that we can't pay. So I'm, I'm interested in that, in addition to the other issues that we're talking about.
I just have one question for Brooke before this, and it's, have you anticipated administering the grant?
Correct, administering it? I figured we would do the majority of the work, including helping to draft the actual application because it really is information more about us and our operations. I guess from my point of view, it would need to kind of be a flow-through type process, but I have not applied for a grant like this in the past. Now I know Deb, I should probably turn it over to you because you said the county has received one before.
We've had two other CDVG grants before. There's reporting requirements, there's also auditing requirements. And Lisa and I discussing last week, if the county proceeds with applying for this grant and getting the funds, it would trip a special audit. And those auditing costs can be related to the grant.
But not reflected in the grant, right?
Correct. The only, the only dollars right now that are being discussed are those related to the direct transportation services and that they administer.
It would not be my recommendation to, for the county to take this on right now. Today, definitely not. And I, I believe it's, as I stated earlier, it's for this along with another item that we'll be discussing, which is the Herta Works, okay? Which is the van, all right? Yeah, okay, just, I know, and I said, hey, okay. Is that only to reach out, once again, to the employers to find out whether the appetite has changed. And then, if it has, the appetite has changed, the next step will be on that is to come back and look at these other considerations. And we, I don't feel we are anywhere near close, but I feel that the staff did, and did a really good job of putting together the ba, the base roadmap for us, for everybody to start having that discussion. And then there is more on the agenda related to other, another option, you know, except, so, that's...
So, another solution, I'm not sure if this kind of goes a little more to your concerns about the cost per rider, per, per job, would be a VAM pool program. And Herta actually did, excuse me, an RFP earlier this year. Our board approved and awarded two vendors just at the end of September. So this is all new information. The contracts are being negotiated now. And we do anticipate our board to approve both of those contracts by the end of February. So it'll be a pretty short turnaround time. We did submit this to ASSET as a new service for fiscal year '20. However, at the time that that, that supplemental process took place was before we were engaged with economic development. So we didn't have all of the need background and so this service was denied. So this isn't something that's currently going to be budgeted through the ASSET process. Typically, the appetite for a VAM pool program is because it's subsidized. So the industry standard is about $400 a month. That's what we see in our research and transit systems nationwide and here locally. So, the $400 subsidy, and of course, it's going to depend on how many people are riding. If there's seven people, whether there's 10 people, and how far they're riding, and then which vehicle they would select. One of the vendors that we awarded was Enterprise, and the other one was DART. So they get two different types of services. It's really more about consumer choice and pricing. So they can have newer, higher level vehicles with Wi-Fi and cellphone charging and, you know, work while they're commuting. Or they can go with, with a DART service, which wouldn't be the offer all of those but would have a lower cost to the rider. So just for numbers sake, since we're like seizing that. If you say that the average van would be $1,200 a month and then we would have a subsidy of $400 a month, then the rest of the $800 would be divided by, let's say, seven people riding in the van. So that's...
$5 a day?
Yeah. But the cost of the rider over the, over the course of the year then is, is lower than doing the commuter shuttle bus. So these were really two things that were brought up as a mechanism to address the need of getting employees. If we did go with the VAM pool program, and again, I do believe that's something we could still look at the grant for, which is separate than the shuttle we had previously talked about. But if we did go that route, we could open that up to more than just Nevada. So there might be more...
Sure, because then you got vans leaving and going multiple different directions.
Yeah, people living in different places in the county, who meet our county around. Because that's another thing we heard at this workshop last week too, is that we still have needs to get people from Ames up to Story City and back, as an example, because of the employers up there, like Bethany, the, and I want to say Bethany Life, and that's not what they call themselves now, but we've got, and then some manufacturing up there. So there's another way...
Now, there's still some caveats to the grant. And one of those is entitlement communities. So Ames is an entitlement community and receives funding directly. So this grant wouldn't be able to benefit the Ames community on either leg of the trip. However, it would still be able to benefit other communities such as Story City, including Nevada. So, you know, really, I think this was more informational. It certainly doesn't hurt, in my opinion, either way of what the direction the county wants to go or decisions that you make, if that's additional research, reaching back out to employers. It's just to give you the information that you need.
And it has done, it has done that for me, absolutely. This is an issue we've got to continue to work on. But I'm kind, I feel myself shifting a little through this conversation more to the van share concept and seeing what possibilities there are out there. Whether, even if there's not a grant included, if you're telling me that it's a $40,000 subsidy per year per van and you figure that maybe you can get six employees on each van, all of a sudden, especially if you start talking about skinning the game from an employer, all of a sudden, it becomes really palatable per job to do something like that. Whereas the $10,000 per job is, you can't afford to do that.
I could not vote for that. And the added benefit of the VAM pool program, and I'm not trying to...
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, completely transparent here. But the other benefit is, is convenience. And when we look at commuting workers, they're spending time in a vehicle added to their traditional workday. And so if we had the commuter shuttle as a bus and it's making multiple stops at multiple employers, instead of looking at a 30-minute drive, you're extending that to 50 minutes. The VAM pool program, you're really hitting each individual employer so you're not adding that additional stop time.
Boy, and plus that, I would think it would make it easier to sell to the individual employer. And I'm going to use Burke as the example. If you're saying to Burke, hey, here's three vans for 18 employees that you hired in Marshall Town. Here's what the total cost is. Here's how much we think the employees need to be charged. Here's the rest of it. We'll work with you on that. Now, all of a sudden, it becomes a pretty palatable program and much easier to have the conversation with the individual employer than this. We've got a bus route running and you'll be a stop on the bus route.
And I believe that, as we look forward to the next step, which is employer conversation, is to explain both of those options. The Chamber, of course, earlier this year had initiated, I think, three very, three different conversations groups where they tried to get, now this is Ames employers, but there were a couple of employers who were from outside of Ames, okay, that I believe were engaged in this. But talked about, once again, back to the study, and Sheri Kybus from PRRIDE was there and talked about just even after you get people to Ames and moving them around after coming back, that because of the types of services some of the employers were looking for, because they want to hire software engineers. We're no longer just talking about a targeted manufacturing, although that's where the need is so great right now. It would probably be any pilot program focused. But that they want, if they're not driving, they want to be able to work on their laptop. And, you know, she, her comment to sum it all up was, is you're talking about getting, you know, those big charter buses, like CIT rents out, where people have Wi-Fi on it, nice padded seats, and the shocks on the buses are great and whatever and stuff. So, so yes, that still is, I think, my recommendation there, that the employer discussion is the next step to find out what interest there is.
Boy, and I'll suggest that for this board, I would suggest that the next step is that this be an item for us to discuss as part of our budgeting process to potentially plug some dollars in for some kind of pilot project, but then it has some dollars attached to it to be able to work on it for calendar year 2019. But really applying in FY '20, which Marty lets you out of the conversation at this point. But I would suggest that we hold all of this for a conversation that we initiate as part of the budget process, if you're okay with that. Thank you guys so much for doing this. I know you got more. Thank you guys so much for, for putting this together and your work on this. I think it gives us a little more, sometimes just figuring out what you're not interested in helps you down the road of figuring out what you are interested in. And with that, I'll turn to you for other Herta business.
Great. Okay, so, thank you quite a lot. So, and when I was working on Deb on the meeting today and the presentation today, what we were going to talk about, I said, I feel like I need to be completely transparent with everything looking at Burke fiscal year '20. So, back on September 25th, it was announced that the Iowa DOT was awarded a $7 million federal grant for bus facility infrastructure investment program of rural transit vehicle replacement. Of that $7 million coming here to rural Iowa bus replacements and facility repairs, 10 buses will be replaced in a per fleet, and of those 10, 7 are in Story County. This is a pretty sizable increase in bus replacements that we typically see. So, the grant is for 85% federal dollars, which require a 15% local match. So if you look at seven vehicles at 15%, the total local match for replacement would be almost $98,000. And just to make sure, you know, we're explaining a little bit of the need, annual maintenance on our buses that have exceeded their useful life averages, about $14,000 to $15,000 more per vehicle over the course of the year.
In one year?
In one year, per vehicle. Buses, the buses, these seven in Story County that are being replaced were all ordered before I got here eight years ago. They're aging 2008, 2009 models. They have $285,300... They have 285,000 to 320,000 miles on each one of them.
What is, where do we consider useful life in? How old, how many miles?
The federal useful life on our buses is four years, 100,000 miles, has to meet both. So they've doubled and tripled what their useful life is.
And you say this is an FY '20 issue. Is that according to the grant? So this is me, me and me and Laura's, but I'm always looking at where we are budgetarily.
Correct.
And it seems to me that in FY '19, if things keep moving like they're moving, I can see finding $97,000. I don't know what 2020 is going to look like at this point. We had a lot of conversations to have.
Correct.
What's our flexibility, if any, there?
That's a great question. We do not have the contracts yet from the DOT. They were just, again, notified at the end of September. So between getting paperwork from the feds and then reissued from the state down to us, that does take some time. I've seen it take it, you know, six months or longer. And then the grants, we have to have them ordered at least halfway through. It's very complicated. So we would be looking at ordering them within the next year, which is why we wanted to bring this up now before we start our budget process.
But not within the next six months.
Correct.
So the best we could do is go ahead and put a place or go ahead and have it come from reserves in 2020 with the reserve money actually being saved from fiscal year 19. And I guess I'd just like to comment on this one is that these are the buses that are serving population within Story County right now. They're, the riders are getting on buses that are at two to three times their life already should have been changed out. And the ask why it's so much rather than one or two buses per year is due to that 100% grant for the purchase of these that happened back in 2008, 2009 from the federal government. So they're just all are at the point now where maintenance is costing way too much, as you see here. They average like $14,550 higher in maintenance per year. So if you just take a look at that, we're got really into the $97,000. You know, either way, we're going to be putting out in our rate that we're charged via the asset process. We're putting out more money. And the ask for fiscal year 2020 on our regular asset funding mechanism is going up to $24,800, which if you recall from when we kind of backed, backed up our rate for HERDA, starting in January of this year. Remember that there were increased costs involved because of changes in the Medicaid transportation. Okay. So we almost doubled it back then. We went from 19 and now here, the rate increase is $5 right now. So there's already a cost to us. It's not $97,000. But if we keep those old buses and manage to keep them on the road for another year, there's still a five, an extra $5.
Yeah, so that's, you bring up an interesting point that I'd like to know more about because the reality is if the average annual expenses for a bus past its useful life is $14,000 more than one of these new buses, then over seven buses, you're talking about more than $100,000 in savings in any given year. And if you're telling me that we need to spend $97,000 in order to save $100,000, that's a pretty easy conversation, but I don't think there's a direct correlation there. And so I'd like to understand more about if HERDA is saving this $14,500, how does that per bus?
Right.
How does that impact our rate? What is the true savings? So now you're saying, okay, we're investing $97 now in order to, over a couple of years, save this much money. Of course, I'd like to see what all that looks like.
Yes, it is not $100,000. It's about a difference of a $5 per ride. We'd have to do some math.
And I need, yeah, I just need to see what all that looks like.
I can certainly get you some valid information. I don't do the asset budget. I apologize.
Yeah.
And that, her, that's something Julia handles. But we did briefly talk about it at Laura's request yesterday, when she looked through the agenda package. She had some questions.
Right, but what is, I mean, what is very clear is if the $97 is spent by seven buses, it will save HERDA, if the $14,000 is right, it'll save HERDA $100,000 a year for that. Right? So we invest $97, HERDA saves $100. There, it needs to benefit the people of Story County as well. And so we just need to look at that.
I think, sure.
Yeah.
And so when we looked at this yesterday, our current asset rate is like $36 a week. And it's anticipated, or the way Julia wrote that in 2020 was $24,800. So.
There you go.
There's your savings.
It's already reduced in anticipation of.
Get this done. Perfect. And so then I just need to do the math of how many riders that impacts. Perfect. Anything else?
We really appreciate you guys.
We appreciate you.
I know this is a lot of information.
No, we absolutely appreciate you and the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
And if there's anything further that you need or you'd like to have us reach out, we'd be happy to help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great day. See you, Brooke. Okay, now back to the top of additional items, consideration of revised purchasing policy after seven-day review. Lucy Martin.
Good morning, Lucy.
Good morning, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Just barely. Lucy, any comments or any follow-up on this?
Yes, so I sent this out before seven-day review last Tuesday. I received comments, appreciative comments from the engineer's office, Secretary Rhodes, and then emergency management. They repaired this policy, but they rewrite it for emergency management purposes in their commission. And Keith also had a question. Should we not have a definition of procurement? And I'm like, yes, we should. So I've added that. So that is an addition to this.
Yep.
The document you saw last week. So that was the only subsidy comment I've received. So you could either prove it after seven-day review, know the changes, or you can put it out for additional seven-day reviews, because I have added that.
Yeah. So Board, I don't see the need for adding a definition. What, adding a definition of procurement to me does not trigger an additional seven-day review. Your call. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move that we adopt this revised as presented today as our new Story County purchasing and procurement policy.
All right, second up. Motion to the second. Clarify, I know this is what you meant, but clarifying, no seven-day review, this would be.
No seven-day review.
Yep. Further comments? Olson?
Aye.
Chidi?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Thanks, Lucy.
All right, thank you.
Next is discussion and direction regarding the 2019 communications plan. Come on, Leanne.
Good morning.
Um, my computer died actually.
Permanently did, or just?
It was a little battery in connection with that.
People of Story County should just feel secure that we got every ounce of life out of our projector and our computer.
And our computer, that's right.
Talk about taking it to the limit.
Well, I'm going to create the old school today. I have copies in presentation. Hope you would go to the second page of the presentation, please. What I'm here for today is.
You got an extra presentation for Marty?
Yeah, I did.
Debbie, I was going to look at it.
I hope it'll go up there.
What's in our packet is not what's in front of us.
Oh, here it is. No, I'm sorry.
No, this is just a presentation.
I'm sorry, thanks, Deb.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thank you.
And it looks like this. Why here today is just to, as a conclusion of the presentation, I'll read it. Just get some guidance, one, cover your board with this year's communications plan and then what, what if any budget implications those directions may include. I'll call a slideshow. Presentation's pretty simple and sweet. The, just the basic, the first communications plan was adopted by the board back in 2014. Several iterations since, what I did is I spent, if you want to go to the next page, each plan since initial adoption has included four main elements. Goals, target audience, strategies, action steps. And then the next slide. In 2014, when we started talking about this, staff was tasked with looking at, how do we do this for some examples and that, that sort of thing. And so this is a history of that, different steps to follow for development. In 2016, obviously, we had the C2C plan adopted. So we kind of switched the approach to including branding, you know, seed, wood mills, all that. That's part of the C2C. So that did help change a little bit. Looked at examples from Beckenbauer County, Broward County. Did reach out to our peer counties within the state of Iowa and see what they had. And at that point, we were looking for a compact communication plan. The target audiences on the next slide have remained consistent throughout, with the exception, we added businesses. And that was last year. And then the next slide are the goals. And in essence, these have remained the same with some tweaking of the language, making proper grammar. Or just like last year, we added or modified the approach. We put strategies and objectives under each goal. Really took it to the next level, let me say. And then finally, the strategies themselves. Sorry, I did not page number of the slides. I wanted to go back to past iterations of the plan and that is what was on your agenda. So it's 2014 copies of the communications plan. I want to get a sense of where we got the strategies and numbers. So throughout the past four, five years, we've had nine strategies that remain consistent throughout. Starting in 2015, we had 14 strategies. In 2016, we had 16 strategies. And 17, 20 strategies. And last year, we actually increased again up to 26 strategies. So we, each year, as we've gone through this internally, found the new, either a new way to provide outreach or a mechanism to provide employment. Next slide, page and page. This is really hard and meat for today. A little bit of element, how do you tell you is page, not swatch, and page. Steps and timeframe, looking for direction on two areas. One, the steps and timeframe that staff internally will need to follow to compile the 2019 communications plan. And with that, does it remain in-house for staff to develop or if we look at other avenues? And then I thought this the past couple of weeks. This is one of the few plans we have that run by calendar year. Our CIP strategic plan holds around on fiscal year. It's now the time to evolve this into fiscal year as well, or does this remain calendar year? I think it will succeed either way. I didn't know how much consistency we wanted to bring forward. And then budgeting for items is another area I'm seeking this direction today. Some of the strategies that we have in this current plan, if we continue forward into next year, will have some budgetary implications. Is this now the time that we start looking at, oh, is we building a new budget or do we wait until we actually have a 2019 communications plan adopted? That kind of goes back to the fiscal year discussion as well. Video productions is one item and display boards and toolkits, the swag stuff, but also our traveling display, our display board has only, we've only had it for four years and seen about a day.
Those traveling display boards are the last one.
You know, we've got a lot of loose hours. We really have. And then other suggestions.
I would like to start this conversation by pointing out that we have a new board coming on in 2019 and I think the 2019 board should do the final.
Which is, which is the way this is set up.
This is set up.
Absolutely.
Super.
This is just getting direction for what Leanne, start, Leanne and Deb start to put together for budgetary and kind of what's going to be presented to the new board. And it's late January, early February generally to approve this thing. But some of the conversations that I think are really worth us talking about today are whether to move to a fiscal year, which makes a lot of sense because all of our budgetary stuff is on the fiscal year. But we've been running our communication plan on the calendar year, which I hadn't really thought about. It doesn't line up very well with what we're trying to do.
We, although I guess I don't have a great preference one way or the other. That's the other discussion, I think, for the board to have, you know, with the new board to have. We do the P and Z work plan, we take a look at, that's a calendar year. We do some things that seem more practical from a calendar year, but either way, we can make adjustments as needed. So I really don't have, I think the calendar year works fine. I do have a very strong opinion that it needs to remain in-house. Since this PowerPoint wasn't a part of the agenda packet, I wasn't quite sure what you were looking for when it came to direction, et cetera. So when I went through and did, you know, my very thorough course, not to get it, okay? I just looked for things to be added and deleted. And then I came from that, some basic thoughts, thinking you were looking for direction as far as, you know, overall. And my direction would be, of course, take out what we've completed, like the website design, add, you know, whatever you think needs to come in for, you know, your next goals and then the new board could talk about them and go to look at that. I'd like to see in this year's communications plan, some reference in the social media section to what policies we actually have out there that we've adopted on social media. And that pretty well took care of what I was thinking general direction would be. I like that you shifted from the format of the table with all the X boxes over the years. I see a couple of things even back from 2014 that didn't get accomplished because it's a very ambitious plan, which is one reason why I think it needs to remain in-house. I think it's a thorough plan and it's ambitious, but yet it allows us to be flexible as we, as we move forward and allows prioritization of needs by both the board and the staff. So.
Right, but the only thing, the only thing that's being asked today is direction for what kind of things Leanne will put together for the new board to consider. So I tend to agree with you on the whole in-house thing, but know that that's just going to be the proposal that's going to go to the new board.
Right, right.
I don't have, I don't know that I see it as clean as you going calendar year versus fiscal year, but I don't know that I really care all that much. The question for Leanne is how does she build a proposal? Because it has some budgetary implications depending on how you change up your proposal. What I would suggest is that with the new structure that came into effect in, what was it? At the start of this fiscal year, I think the questions of what you're plugging into your budget for the board to consider goes through Deb and you and Deb make the best calculation you can of what you would like to propose to the board to consider as part of the budget, rather than us making that decision here. And then I think I agree with you on the rest of it.
Thank you. And I think that's a great practice. Are there items that we've not yet taken on? And I know Laura's, you mentioned you'd like to have someone help with the onboarding videos.
Oh, that hasn't been contacted. No one's been contacted about that yet. Okay, but yes, that is correct.
Actually, I'll be meeting a lady next week.
Okay, super.
But that's a budget implication.
Yeah.
Are there other items such as that, that, and that's not filling out any budget this current fiscal year or next fiscal year, any kind of outside resource to provide assistance to staff to undertake projects? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. Is there something next calendar year or even next fiscal year that we should, as staff, be looking at so that we can, I can communicate that to them unless we have a budget?
I have one project. I don't know that this is a big resource item at all, but it would be up to you and Deb to come back and say, yeah, I think maybe a little outside help with this would be. I'd like to really start looking at archiving or having a central archive for all of the photos. That's conservation and, you know, and different departments take them. Not that the departments shouldn't keep their own copies of them. This is something Craig Myers and I, from the conservation board, as you know, he's quite the photographer. And Craig and I had discussed this several months ago. He came to me and said, do you have a central archive? All right, but that, you know, so maybe that is contract help. Maybe that's an intern who has an emphasis in photography. You guys make that decide. That'd be my only, I guess, ask that you would.
Yep. Anything you think we need to be working on?
I look forward in 2019 to see what you do with Meyer Store.
Okay, yeah.
That is, that has budget implications. I believe that's a $12,000 year application. That has budget implications, I believe that's a $12,000 a year application. I think.
And we're contracted to do that through April, so the new board's going to have to talk about what that looks like.
And that's what happened here after the first year. I gotta tell you, our quarterly meetings. I figured you were going to say that, that's what I was just, since you didn't, I thought. I think that was tried, I understand the desire to do it, I think you just don't have the uptake. I do hear, and I just heard it here last night in Cambridge, that they do like our new website. And I would encourage, GS I B here too yesterday, and our website, I think we should be maximizing potentials. If you're talking about you've already spent the dollars to do that and bring it into being, I would point you in the direction, as a new board, sit there and say, are we doing here, you know, look at that as a medium and a mode to deliver what you talk about on the communication side of things. What can we do there with dollars already expended?
And that's.
After that, very good.
Yeah. Several years ago, it was about podcasts. Still, I don't know if you were planning on doing a few podcasts in-house on topics, or, you know, come back to us with what you also feel you might be able to take on. That's nice to hear about the website.
No, that's it. People are looking at it, I mean, once again, Beacon is always a big driver of traffic, that it is clearly more user-friendly, there's more place there. I think we have mapping opportunities to place some things on, because I think people, not necessarily, I think we intuitively get it, but I think people use our website to educate before they engage. And the more information we can place there in the public domain that could be accessed electronically before so many steps or makes the effort to step inside our world, we should do it, you know, we should be making every effort that way.
Yes, so the only thing I would add to this conversation, hopefully Leanne is giving you and Deb enough direction, is so when we created this position and started down this path, it became kind of a catch-on, and everything started flowing through. Or everything that didn't automatically fit somewhere else started flowing through. And it feels like the communications plan has kind of taken that same life of its own as we see the number of initiatives grow and grow and grow. We can't keep growing the number of things that we're trying to do in our communications plan. We need to pick those key factors and really get good at, rather than doing a whole bunch of stuff and doing it okay. Let's pick some things, let's get, and the board's going to be the one that has to decide, but you guys, I think, need to work on streamlining that proposal for the board. But let's pick a few things and let's get really, really good at that. I think, I think we're to that point in what was a new initiative in 2014, it's not new anymore, and it's time for us to really get this as an effective piece of work.
Correct. I agree with that.
Good. Enough direction from us for you guys to go on? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leanne.
Next is discussing consideration for the Ziegler CAT items from Pele.
Darren.
Pele, I hate to myself when I say that, he hasn't played soccer in 30 years. But Darren, Darren cracked a couple ribs on soccer the other day. So moving slow.
At soccer, you play yourself.
Used to.
I didn't know. You had a career.
Okay, I did have a PowerPoint, but do you all have the documentation from the board's agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll kind of switch gears.
Yeah, I need that copy back.
Well, I didn't turn off this.
Yep.
Okay, so where we're at now, we had a public hearing for this on October 23rd, so we waited 30 days, not aware of any petitions for election on that issue, so we're able to move forward. There's been one change from the agreement that you've seen in the past, and that's part of the financing portion of this. It complicates things, but I think it's for a good reason, I'll get into that in a second. So if you see the new purchase agreement form, middle of the form on the left, under terms, it used to have a $280,000 per year payment to CAT, that's been taken out, taken out of the form, and it just says US Bank is secured by Story County, that's what I'll get to later. So US Bank will be paying CAT upfront, the 2.186 million, and then we find this will be a US bank, first term for a year. And then on the last item, it says guaranteed buyback value. That used to be, Deb used to say guaranteed purchase option, because our first five-year lease, CAT still owned the machines. Now they're kind of getting turned over to US Bank or Story County. CAT will no longer own them, so it won't be a purchase option anymore. So if that CAT put in a guaranteed buyback, originally they had a guaranteed trade value, but we weren't real comfortable with that trade language, and we'd have to deal with that CAT puts a buyback, then we don't necessarily have a guaranteed buyback value instead of trade. So we have a guaranteed buyback value, 124,000 per machine. Now, the other thing that kind of drops off with this, we go with the US Bank financing option. Prior five years, we kind of had that end-of-lease walk-away option, we knew nothing. We understand that kind of goes away with the financing, which is a thing, but I asked them, is there any scenario where we walk away and you own motor graders? They said, no, this is more of a financing lease purchase option than actually lease where you walk away. Kind of lose that option, but I really don't see a scenario where we actually use that $300,000 equity, we gain the machines.
Right.
And that's just not really a dry cough. I don't see that being efficient for us, but I want to make sure of that. So where we're at with the CAT agreement is you need to get that going and approved so CAT can get those motor graders built by March 1st time. I'll go into the financing, see what you're getting into before you approve this first. So if you just go back to, one has US Bank on the top. Actually, just put the last sheet, that shows their payment tables. Ethan and I have been working through these options. Originally, it just had the top option there with the 3.85 rate. And what that was, is we did have to do a first down payment in December 20, 23rd, $250,000. We were a couple less for a couple reasons. One, we'd have to set up an escrow account, and that created a whole other set of complications. And two, in general, I know these probably won't be legal to pay in these three months before we actually get the order for it. So we weren't real comfortable with that option, so we had them put the second option together, that pushed the payment back to the March delivery time, but then we're still paying interest for those three months, so that's the first interest of $21,000. We didn't need to start the interest payments until March and our payment. So that, so we couldn't lock in the 3.85 using the March 1st date, but the last option that we ended up with, they were able to push it all the way to March, locking in the 3.9%. So we only pushed it up five basis points. In the end, that payment would be $250,000 a year opposed to the 280 I originally proposed, financing through the 6% with CAT. So we're saving $30,000 a year, $150,000 worth of money here, so this US Bank portion is well worth it, I think.
Absolutely.
So that's the finance option. Ethan and I were comfortable with the third option at the bottom, but they couldn't put all the paperwork together until the board gave some direction on that. But we both felt like you still take action on the CAT portion and then come back to it.
Okay, so before we get to the CAT portion, let's talk about the US Bank portion. So this is something new for us to see as a board. This was not the direction we thought we were headed, this is not the way we did that first lease, but, but, and I'm oversimplifying here, in essence, it saves the taxpayers $30,000 a year for the lease of this equipment, changes, changes the end a little bit. I mean, the nice part is CAT being willing to write in the guaranteed buyback for the amount that we're going to owe on these machines, make it for a board five years from now to be able to make the same kind of decision, but it's a little different than what we've dealt with before. Some of us felt like there was value, real value, in that extra $30,000 a year, and that's why this was for you. So let's talk about the US Bank portion first.
Well, I would, anything involving the public gallery, I'd probably bring Mrs. Markley up and ask her how she feels about, for variety of doing something like this in the census, if we can discuss the obvious savings here, but is there anything that gives you pause on what Darren just said?
No, Darren and Ethan have all included me in all the conversations and thoughts and issues. I feel comfortable with it. My question on maintenance, so the ongoing maintenance, we have to do now as opposed to.
They're still fully warranted. Everything's up.
Yeah, all that changes is now we will own the equipment and just owe money on it, rather than, as it's set up right now, we don't own the equipment, they own the equipment, and we're paying for the ability to use the equipment. Laura's?
I think saving the $30,000 is the way to go. I think the option three, I understand it's five basis points higher on the rate, but the savings still ends up to be.
Yeah, we just spent part of this meeting talking about how to spend it in 2019.
Correct.
Here's where you get a little bit of clawback on some dollars that you were already looking to appropriate somewhere else.
And to provide on your body, you just approved was 3.95.
Yeah, so we're doing better than that, right?
Well, I have comfort in that, and I know this is a hybrid, I think it was a good idea, great, and frankly, went to greatness, and watching it play out over five years, now we find ourselves in a different terrain. We have the ability to do some things differently, yet, you know, ultimately, we are purchasing 10 motor graders to maintain our roads, and we know that we're getting the product that we want, we're getting the timeframe we want, we're getting it for less money than we initially had thought we were going to do. So I don't think there's too many hurdles here to jump through that I have heartburn on.
Yeah, and just for me, without the guaranteed buyback, I would have a lot less comfort in this, because then it would feel like we wouldn't really, it would be market-driven. Now we know what the floor is, and the floor is going to be at least as good as what we owe. And so, thank you for getting that built in, in all this. So if I, this is not an approval of the US Bank agreement, that's got to come back to us, but if you're comfortable with the US Bank agreement in principle, then we can move on to go ahead and get the order done with the CAT by executing this. We good moving on to that?
Yes.
All right, so Darren, anything to add? Again, it's 10 motor graders for 10 motor graders, all under warranty, Lisa, appreciate you bringing that up, all under warranty. They do have that new fuel component that we're not fired up about, but we don't have any choice in that. Anything else we need to add for the board for these 10?
Currently paying $260,000 right now, and this will actually drop at $250,000. I don't have to be a discussion yet on, is that still going to come out with laws or not? Do you have like a session?
It is, like a nod from the back of the room.
I'm assuming so, that's where.
We'll let the new board talk about that.
Yeah, new board to talk about that.
That's the only thing I answered my mind, so you're good to go.
Good. So if there's no other questions, I'd take a motion to approve the purchase agreement with Ziegler.
With consideration of new product purchase, Ziegler, and for 10, 2019 CAT dollar motor graders were $2,188,960. Do I want to say this? The financing for US?
No, no, we're not doing that part yet. Listen, just, we're just agreeing to purchase these 10 machines from Ziegler right now.
And my motion is without financing.
Good.
Second.
Motion in the second, further discussion. Chief.
Hi.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, we're buying 10 new motor graders. Thanks, Darren. We'll look for, any expectation on the amount of time for the US Bank agreement to come back?
Well, that's all I contacted her today, since.
We've got time since it's marked, you get it locked in, and then clearly, we got to do it at some point to pay for them before March.
Hopefully, she can get them like this.
We'll see. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Darren. No agency reports today, Department of Labor reports facilities. Joby, what's going on?
Afternoon. You know, I was just going to say that, I didn't say good afternoon. All right. Okay, Brian did good.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Just a standard quarterly report from August 29th to November 28th. Start off with our completed work orders by Bill. Administration Building, we had 118 work orders, nine after-hours weekend calls. Group homes, 103 work orders, 11 after-hours or weekend calls. Conservation, Farland Park, we had nine work orders, one after after-hours call. Human Services Center, 101 work orders, 18 on-call. Out to jail, 122 work orders, five after-hours and weekend calls. Rest of the Justice Center facility, we had 109 work orders and 16 on-call scenarios. We had one on-call for animal control. Most of the work orders, that building are covered underneath the remodel right now. That's why we've got a list in there. Engineers Building, we had 10 work orders and five on-calls. It's a total of 572 work orders and 66 on-calls, and unfortunately, we had one still there.
More to come sadly. Hey, Joby, if it's not a huge issue, can we start getting comparison year-over-year data? So what I, what I think would be helpful is if we could also see what, you know, the end of August through the end of November for 2017 looked like compared to 18. Start being able to really compare apples to apples in terms of timing year, and then if we start to notice a spike in work orders or on-calls in one place or another, then we'll be able to ask that question.
Can do.
Perfect. Any other question for, he moves on to, to the projects they've done. Okay, Joby?
All right. A little more detail on specific things we've done. Last summer, we, whole entire front yard of Justice Center was killed in the drought. We got, placed all the sod there, it's basically, which was nice, with some landscape tools and it's bushes and things, all that was added. We got, rest of the windows replaced in the Farland Park.
Mike going to chase down, see if we got any lion, he made notes.
I think he was looking into it.
He was looking into it. We got the well field and Human Services Center flushed out, the fluid replaced, which is a maintenance item that was completely. Did some safety training with secondary roads. The new panic alarm system we have at this building, we did our annual testing on that, workable plan to test all the aspects of that system, because it ages out multiple ways, so we've got to wait and test and confirm it will function with somebody who needs it to. Continuing, the carpet replacement in Human Services Center for manufacturer's defects. Currently, they're working, excuse me, Department of Human Services right now. Not leave, multi-purpose room, conference room east, to remain there right now in the process of getting the proof of the manufacturer, have that carpet sorted, please. Once that's done, that'll leave, we'll report, we'll be the only one left in that building that has that patch and carpet. It's going well. Had the annual inspections of the generators of the Administration Building and Justice Center. A big one was, very greedy, not the center, got a little bit of that.
Big time. You worked hard to get that done, Joby. I hope everybody appreciates how hard, how cumbersome that process was at times. Good job.
We had some hurdles in that one, but we got over them. Had the annual water heater inspections done through homes, assisted the auditor's office and election supplies. Does that happen every election cycle? Yep.
I guess they do.
Oh, it's unbelievable, I'm not sure how many other counties are able to manage it this way, but our facilities department for years now has, has really been instrumental. We used to rent trucks for facilities to take this thing around, then we bought the trailers, but couldn't do it without facilities. I know how appreciative Lucy Martin and her staff is to what you guys do.
She's very appreciative. We love it, and the guys like doing it because it's a lot of power.
Absolutely.
Another big one is accepted bid agreement with Justice.
That is a big thing.
It's huge.
That fixes a systemic inherent OEM problem, and I'd like to think we get lucky, and I don't, I don't recall what you said, the lifespan is the likelihood of this roof, but I think it'll be sometime that before you ever.
We should get 30 years on it.
I hope for that, I hope for that one.
Especially with the upgrades we did to the original.
We fixed a lot of problems that existed in a way that.
We fixed a lot of problems that existed in a way that somebody later can appreciate and focus.
Yep. And, uh, County Attorney's Office is working on, contract on that, so in a couple weeks and a half, we're going to prove.
Good.
Move forward on that.
Excellent.
We added some Keelos entry to the facility shop and garage to work the Justice Center. These ones have been, they're wrapped on, it's all available right now. And at that time of year, we got some foot and switched over to, started moving snow instead of wood brass. We're ready.
It's hot.
And they started installing a heat pump for IT, and it's in the ceiling, bringing it down, so it should be here right now, hopefully.
Good.
And, and the control remodel is a little over halfway done, so it was racing shooting for the end of this month for completion, but it's probably going to be the end of next month.
Do you happen to know, are they on track and on time at least for the dog room, putting the bathroom in?
Yep, yep. Right now, uh, sewage stand power washed the floor. They got contractors done with the work in that, and so we decided we're going to power wash the floor, we sealed it while it's vacant, so they were power washing it yesterday. And then, here is putting some enzyme monic help with, you know, animals.
Kill them back here, right?
Yeah, and, uh, then we'll be sealing hopefully tomorrow, Friday for sure.
So the dogs will be able to.
Yeah, they're just going to come back Friday afternoon.
Okay, great.
Good.
We also got all the exterior windows washed, all the buildings, along with the siding, for all group homes.
Nope, looks good.
All right. We installed a fence at Human Services Center on the islands, we have 15-minute parking and handicap parking, so they're going to be able to walk.
Keep walking until.
People hit their heads on it, so, fence in, so they can use the side lock instead of cut the rocks. Since concrete repairs at Human Services Center and Calum, didn't get all of them done we wanted to, but we're going to block rain and things, so contracts still got some. This building, we converted all the panic lights to LED, some were ingescent, main entry ones are not going to be, but it doesn't like ours. Under the addition of General Bus, it's not the case.
As a future private citizen, I would encourage the future board to keep your foot on this one, because we are a large consumer of electricity with our heat pumps or geothermal, and if you want to offset that, that draw, here's where you start.
Have some discussion later on about that exactly. Other snow equipment thing we received from the new truck, we got all the plow and everything switched, ready to go.
Good.
Also replacing some carpet on the second floor of the Justice Area, Justice Center. Is that that age where carpet wore out?
Yeah.
And replaces.
Uh, we, we forget pretty regularly how, uh, how many years our buildings have on this one, but Justice Center as well is not a new building anymore. Speaking of the Justice Center, can you give us an update on conversations that, additional conversations that you've been having with county attorney and, and maybe a couple of the judges over there about the possibility of some additional space with County Attorney's Office?
Yeah, I mean, the justice of it is, is one of the judges that's currently using the courtroom on first floor, there's a courtroom on second floor that they're not utilizing anymore, so it's free. Judge Owen is considering moving up to that courtroom. There's some things that we'd have to do in that courtroom to make it usable for him. There's a couple of security issues on one of the doors to keep people from getting into the back hall, uh, Judge's chambers, and meeting with, uh, we've locked the doors, one of them might be a fire code issue, we need to break runs this afternoon to address that and some options around that. If we can get around that, then we could probably move Judge Owen up there, but it costs us some, some more left to do in there, bring it to, before we move forward on any of it. Jessica and I probably need to, uh, discuss it with the guys, like, cost associated with it, and that would be, uh, quite a bit of, uh, square footage to potentially give to the County Attorney's Office and, uh, if they, it's no secret, they've created out of space.
They need, yeah, they're beyond that.
Right. Because there's some other things that we were going to talk about in much time to rework some of the current space, if they need a couple more offices, this route, we show the things around. Hopefully, uh, when that will take, doing that infill project, produce the need of that same pound.
That's fair. Well, it would absolutely change the potential of the infill and entry project. If they do it away with, then that'd be for another conversation. Uh, just, a- as you go, uh, I think that this is an important one that, that you and Jessica see if you can get to a proposal for the board.
Yep.
On Justice Center.
Because even, even if what we learned from Ray Reynolds this afternoon fills the way, I think it might, but we're still work around.
Yes.
Right now, we're at a pretty different place to approach it, determine which way's the best, don't matter, we're talking about costs associated with it.
Sure. Other questions for Jovi, comments?
I think what I have seen since Cal retired, we chose well. You bring pragmatic leadership style, I think it was well served. Your staff speaks highly of you. I think you are a voice I tend to listen to, and I have had no, nothing but positive experiences and exchanging ideas with you on, on day-to-days and future. So I'd encourage the next board to listen to this man, he's really good at what he does.
Thank you, Marty.
Yes. Are you involved with the sheds anymore? Is that totally secondary roads at this part? Any work left to be done?
We're kind of, we're kind of in it, kind of on the outside, trying to get some input and plan on.
Okay, I'm just, I was kind of wondering who asked for the status, but okay.
We're involved a little bit, and probably a little bit more.
Yeah, I would say status is a Darren question.
I know. Okay, thanks.
Jovi, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, no other reports? Public forum number two, opportunities for members of the public to comment on anything you'd like to comment on. Anybody wishing to so, do so, come right up. Seeing no one moving to the microphone liaison assignments, I have no idea whose turn it is, so I'm going to go with Marty.
Go for it.
Well, I don't know if you understood, but I was asking next era on winter, but we tipped them, and I was hoping here that they might have some build on that.
Yes, okay.
Darn it, they don't. Um, as your days are getting taken up with a long view of FO applications, as are mine, grant five discussions, next Tuesday will be a seminal day as far as Story County Board Supervisors concerned, as you're going to have two extremely weighty discussions.
Completely accidental that we got both of them on the same day.
Yeah, that, that was not anything planned certainly, because one would be certainly not included, two, that's going to be a white, white water mark, I suspect. Um, had a great conversation at Matt Boyk, uh, held a quarterly GSI meeting yesterday, and that is, and I would encourage whoever wants to take that one to, that's, that's a commitment on a board person to go into a room with the county and city assessor, uh, the respective GIS departments, Ames Electric role. You have different opportunities to hear and exchange of ideas that you don't necessarily get anything we do out here or in any other role, but you get an opportunity to hear how Ames views what the county does, and the county gets exchanged views on what Ames does. And sometimes there's a meeting in lines or sharing information that things come about because of the discussions that are had in these quarterly meetings. Wayne Schlickerath, our assessor, did share a little factoid that I found was a little bit off-putting in the sense that he thought as 2019 gives away to the next, uh, assessment, he thought there would be, like you said, 100% increase in valuations, credit bracket. Yeah. Ames, though, thought they were going to hold serve for the most part. So if anybody wants to do any follow-up in that sense.
No, that's what we're seeing.
Yeah.
And after that, at, uh, Dustin and I had a wonderful meeting last night in Cambridge at the City Council. They're doing great things down there, let's hope, what they're trying to do on their own behalf reflects what you've seen up in the hearing and part of what they're applying for on a grand basis to improve their downtown, to bring both, uh, business and, uh, housing opportunities. I think you should embrace and welcome.
Yeah, we've got multiple small towns that have gotten really aggressive and are really, I mean, and I'm talking statewide, you compare some of these towns of under a thousand people with, with counterparts statewide, they're doing things that are just really, really impressive. Uh, I would imagine it's pretty fun to work on, Dustin. Marty, I appreciate you, uh, you going. Anything else?
Nothing.
Laura's?
Um, last Thursday, I was elected vice chair of the Herta Board. Um, we've got.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, okay. So maybe going forward, um, the Board of Health is meeting this afternoon, I'm going to go, uh, they've placed on the agenda, uh, just talking about the makeup of the board after I made a phone call to John Cash and just asking his opinion on something, and all of a sudden it appears on the board, but, um, so there will be.
That'll teach you to call that.
I guess so. Yes, okay, so, uh, and I believe Marty's giving an update on the process about appointments, but there's really no update to give, uh, you know, per se. Deb, are you going to be there? Oh, okay, all right, well, then I guess the statement will be is that the appointments will be made on the 18th, and if they want to provide any input that they haven't provided already, they would head for refer, yeah, I mean, you know, that's, so, um, so then tonight I'm going to have a calls for to discuss housing. Okay, and those lots in Prairie Trail, and Dustin's going to be there, and Mike Cox will be there, who's actually going to be at Prairie Trail. Wednesday, I'm going to be at the ABC Legislative Preview with area legislators, and that's outside of Story County, some of them, and that's in Hudson. And then, of course, we have a joint meeting with the P and Z, uh, Board on the 2019 work plan. That's four o'clock back here in this office. Uh, Thursday, I'll be up at Community and Family Resources. And Friday, I assume we're going to, I mean, I'm going to be there, and I don't know if you guys are going to be able to make it or not. Conservation and Outdoor Alliance, uh, has the legislative reception. Monday is Juvenile Justice, so, um, I'm in meetings a lot, and hopefully there will be some information to carry into the new year.
Good, thank you. Um, yeah, let's see, eat a hearty breakfast next Tuesday, uh, if you're going to need it. Uh, I guess, uh, as you, you noted, you were like vice chair of, uh, Perdime, now the vice chair of the ISAC Supervisors Exec Board, so I spent a grand total of one meeting as the Secretary of Trash, sure.
Congratulations.
And, uh, that is all we've got. If there's nothing else, I take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.